Present.
Three A, oh, I'm sorry, two, Open Meetings Act. This meeting will be conducted according to the rules of the Open Meeting Act, which are posted in the entry to the council chambers. Three additional items. A, city administrators' report, administrators' report. Any questions on that? Councilman Preister.
Thank you. I notice on the report, Club Mega has been an issue for the police. And I just, Chief, if you could maybe comment and let us know what that is, or how that's going, or what the concerns are.
Sure. Since it opened, we've received numerous complaints, probably a dozen, maybe 20, in regards to specifically noise initially. The owner has been cited probably a half a dozen times or more. I've had a meeting with him and his attorney trying to work some sort of compromise out between he and that neighborhood. The meeting went well, but the results continue to be an issue as far as the people complaining about the noise. We continue to work to try to come to some sort of resolution there, but now QT up the street is closing their doors between 1:45 and 2:15 as that club exits because of the numerous disturbances and reported theft inside QT when the business closes. So that's kind of where we're at with it right now. We'll continue to monitor, continue to address each situation case by case as they come in, but that's kind of a overview of what we're dealing with there.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Chief. Councilman Cook.
Chief Albert, I just got a quick question. Is it, is it noise from music, things going on inside the establishment or out in the parking lot as people are coming and going, and then when the establishment is closing?
A little bit of both, but specifically, probably more often than not, bass music from inside, which the people that live directly behind it continue to complain about.
Is parking an issue, do you know?
To my knowledge, not really. There have been some issues in the parking lot. We did have one incident where someone working the door denied its access without paying a cover. There was a scuffle, and that person was jailed. But other than that, it's been specifically noise.
Any other questions on any other portions of the report? Okay. Three B, Mr. John Winkler from the PMR NRD.
Thank you. My name is John Winkler. I'm the general manager of the Papio Missouri River NRD. I've been asked to provide a little bit of an update or briefing on the Sarpy County levees R-613 and R-616, which are currently undergoing a review in engineering by the district to meet current FEMA flood insurance rate map certification requirements. And this, I'll give you a little bit of a history and the timeline of how we got to this point and where we're at. Back in post Hurricane Katrina, the Corps of Engineers was tasked to remap or to relook at the base flood elevation in the Mississippi and Missouri River basins. As part of that process, the Corps was remapping the Papillion Creek watershed, which the city of Bellevue is and the majority of Omaha resides in. As part of that, the, the base flood elevation raised, or was, or was, was raised in elevation. And we quickly determined that the levee system that protects Offutt Air Force Base, the Omaha Treatment Plant, most of the PCS, old PCS property, and some of the southern part of Bellevue would be remapped into the 100-year floodplain with those new requirements. The, the issue with the levees is they're not high enough elevation. So we've worked, we started to work with FEMA in 2009, 2010 to start addressing those issues. We've approached it on several fronts. We've not only tried to be proactive to get ahead, look at the engineering and what exactly we needed to do to bring the levees into compliance, but we also started to work with our congressional delegation and FEMA, the Corps, and, and the administration itself to discuss these requirements. And obviously, our first approach was, well, in 2011, these levees proved themselves impeccably. That was over a 100-year event that they withstood for over a four-month period, and there was no serious significance or, or a break. And up until this point, and into current day, the response from FEMA has been, that's great, but they still don't meet our requirements. So we continue to plan to rehab those levees to meet those requirements. I provided a fact sheet that gives a little bit of the breakdown of, a little bit of the history and what we're looking at as far as requirements. To bring them into certification requirements in today's dollars is a little over 24 million. The, the discussion has been at the district level and working with, obviously, our congressional folks is, is there any federal assistance just to, to help with those? It is a federal mandate. And the reason it is a federal mandate, because there are consequences if you don't meet that. And if you look at the back of the fact sheet, this particular illustrated item shows you what the floodplain would look like if FEMA remapped it as though those levees do not exist. And that is the current criteria. If the levees do not meet FEMA standards, they remap the area as though those don't exist. As you can see, the majority of Offutt Air Force Base is in the floodplain now. In our conversations with the base and any other folks that listen, what that would do is that basically take them out of any ability to gain future missions. In addition, regardless if there's a BRAC or not, it could jeopardize the base itself. We've learned that this is joint command type of base. It necessarily doesn't have to be placed on a congressional base closure list. One of the branches could unilaterally decide that this base is either deficient or has a weakness, and they could start moving missions from that base. So that became, obviously, our first priority, is that this needs to be protected. Where it currently stands with funding is, we've met with our congressional delegation on several fronts. Senator Fisher's been extremely helpful, Congressman Terry as well. But up until this point, we've got no commitment from any branch of the federal government, the DOD, or FEMA, or the Corps, to present any significant dollars, dollars at all to meet this. These levees were built in the 70s and 80s by the Corps of Engineers. After completion, they were given to the district to operate and maintain. We went through that agreement. We've had a host of folks look at it to see what our obligation was. It's very clear our obligation is to keep it into compliance with, with federal rules and regs. There are some other issues. If you don't keep it in compliance as well, you don't get assistance on rehabbing, or if there's a flood event, you don't get assistance on that. So it's just not the FEMA requirements. So we, we've met with the base on several occasions. They've also been very helpful with promoting this as far as with our, not only our congressional delegation, but also our state senators. There are currently two bills that, we attended a hearing Tuesday, LB-940 and LB-1046, which authorized $50 million of cash reserve for water projects throughout the state. And that's, that was generated from the Water Funding Task Force that met over the fall, summer and fall, and came up with their report. Part of the discussion has been if that, in fact, does pass, or a portion of that when one of those bills, that the first 10 million would go toward this project. And I, I haven't seen a project before that has such statewide implications, because I've had senators that reside in the western part of the state bring this up to me as this is an issue for the entire state due to the fact of the base and the infrastructure there. And, you know, the chamber is quick with numbers. It's caused about $2.5 billion worth of economic impact to the state a year, also one of the top employers, if not the top employer in the entire state. So those are all issues that everyone's interested in making sure that that particular piece of infrastructure is protected. Now, there's no guarantee that these bills or these funds will be allocated or passed. Again, we can continue to keep working with our congressional folks and hoping the DOD, Department of Defense, or, or another agency will come forward. We were successful in getting a piece of language inserted in the Word of Bill, which hasn't made its way through Congress yet, but it, it authorizes the Corps to allocate up to 65% cost share for these programs, levees, especially the ones that protect major installations. But there's no guarantee that we'll have any money. It might be nice language sitting in the bill that we can appoint to, but until they actually fund it, it doesn't provide us much assistance. So basically, that leaves us with the NRD, other partners for perhaps the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, city of Omaha. City of Omaha has a huge piece of infrastructure there with their Papillion Creek wastewater treatment plant. If that were to be in the floodplain, I'm sure their insurance would reflect that, and to be able to ensure that facility would probably go up quite a bit. They are understanding. I've met with the mayor, I've briefed the mayor. The mayor, Mayor Sanders has been very helpful in, in talking to FEMA and the congressional delegation, as well as testifying and providing letters of support at those bills at the hearing on Tuesday. So we've had some talk, obviously, we've worked with the city of Bellevue's personnel, who's been a part of this discussion, I think, from the beginning. So this is something we've tried to head off, and we continue to try to head off as far as at a regulatory standpoint, meaning, we try to convince FEMA that, you know, these levees really don't need rehab, they've worked. We, we have examples, but we don't have an engineer who's willing to sign off on that and, and say, yeah, these are, these, they're, they're proven. So we're, we're at that point in time where we have to continue to plan to rehab. We, we met with FEMA last Friday, in fact, with their representatives. They said, you will be getting a provisional accreditation letter, which is the starting point of this whole process, probably in the fall of 2015. Once the district receives that, we have two years to bring those levees into compliance. If we fail to do that, they will remap them, and the result will be, is on the back of your fact sheet. You can start that earlier than the, when you receive the letter. There's no prohibition against, if we got the money tomorrow, that we could start the process, start the construction, and, and meet those requirements. So we continue to work with our legislature, we continue to work with our congressional folks, continue to work with both federal agencies that would have, or three federal agencies that would have the most impact on this, as well as the administration, as well as our partners, to try to, to come up with the funding. The district just doesn't have the wherewithal to meet $24 million in such a short period of time. So we, we will continue the discussion. Our idea is to get the engineering completed, and to get the permit from the Corps to go ahead and do the rehab, and once we have those, then we're ready to go at any time we receive the funding. And we're currently working through that process right now. Carol, I'm sorry, I seen you-
No, that's all right. I, I was waiting till you were finished talking. I, I, I need some clarification as a council member, and perhaps you can give me this clarification, because I've not received an answer on this yet. Can you please tell me when you let our administration know, or when our administration was aware of that this was unfunded mandate?
Well-
You did a great job, I mean, of explaining things to us along the process, but I never remember being told that until I read it in the paper last week.
You know, that, that's, and that's the whole thing, when, when does it become an unfunded mandate? And, and that's the question. Was it from the very beginning, when we got these certification requirements? Or was it when, in fact, federal agencies said, we don't have any money?
Right, and that's to me-
Well, and that's an ongoing discussion, because we approach them all the time, and we look for programs, we look for allocation. Now, you know, for example, if the, the language I talked about in Word, if that gets funded, then all of a sudden, you've got 65% cost share.
Right.
So then it becomes a partially funded federal mandate. So there's really, I don't know when you break that off that it's unfunded, because-
I, I guess what I want to know is when we were aware that that was a possibility, and when our administration knew.
Oh, I, I don't know.
Yesterday, a week ago, a year ago?
I would say that we started planning as an unfunded mandate probably last summer.
And John asked, in 2012, Marlin was here at the council, did a presentation, and at that time, the NRD was going to apply for a grant for $20 million.
Right, I remember that.
So-
The discussion was, we weren't, discussion was not, we're applying for this grant because, frankly, if we don't apply for this, this grant, we're going to be stuck paying for it. We, we approve grants all the time as a way to cost share. It's a good thing to be doing on behalf of the community and the taxpayers. And so, to me, that's not a red flag when somebody comes and says, we want to apply for a grant. And so I'm trying to pinpoint, because I've gone all through the minutes, I've gone through all of my personal notes, and I, I can't see that red flag. And so I'm trying to pinpoint when administration should have taken us aside and said, we have an issue, because we just went through the budget process, and that was, should have been something that was considered in our budget process if we're talking two years, since we did two-year budget, too. So I, I just have grave concerns, and I, I don't mean to put you on Front Street, but the mayor brought you in to come and talk to us about this. And then this is my big issue, is that, that the mayor doesn't make decisions on behalf of Bellevue because she's not the legislative body, the council does. And so when things get dropped in our lap and we're made to look like idiots, I'm not a happy camper. And I can't speak on behalf of the other council members, but for me personally, I'm unhappy that I didn't know this was something we should have been working on when we did our budget.
The, and, and I, we can take, I, I mean, I can help answer that, because we haven't really dropped anything on your lap yet, because we don't know exactly what that possibility would be for the city of Bellevue. We do not even know internally, is the district going to pick up the full 24 million? Will the state pick up half, and the DOD pick up half? And we're responsible for what we've already done? So I guess we, we don't have enough information to come to you, or Sarpy County, or Omaha, or anybody, and say, we would like you to contribute X amount of dollars. Once we are, once we have pursued every avenue we can, and we continue to do that, and I hope what we've done is, we have gotten ahead of the game so far that we're not at the point where, all of a sudden, we get a letter and we're scrambling with two years to say, everybody, we need to come up with 24 million, or we're, we're in trouble. We have been pursuing these avenues since 2009. And so, we were hoping we wouldn't come to the city of Bellevue, or the city of Omaha, Sarpy County, and say, we need anything from you. Our board of say, we'll either kind of, we'll try to fund this ourselves, or we're going to go through the state process, through the federal process, and then, once we get all the answers, whoever tells us no, whoever tells us yes, then we will have a financing plan, and we'll come to you if we have to, and say, we would like you to contribute X amount of dollars.
And at the time in 2012, when you applied for the grant, obviously, there would have been a local match, but it was anticipated at that time that the NRD-
Would pick it up.
-would pick up the entire local match.
Right.
Right. So I, I understand, I understand your frustration, and, and we, we, but we operate, we tend to operate on projects is, once we exhaust all avenues, we're going to rely on the local folks the last. You will be our last source of revenue to cover this. And, because we'll try to pick up the state, federal, NRD, we'll try to pick up those dollars to see where we're at. So this is more of a, more of a, I'd say, a warning that this could potentially affect your budget. It might not. We may be able to, with what we are trying to accomplish with your assistance, to get those funds in place, so we, you won't become a, a financial burden on the city of Bellevue.
And I do understand that. And, but that's part of the budget process, is that we have to have a what-if plan for many things, and that's why we work so diligently on the, the budget. So let me ask you this, who is ultimately responsible for filtering information from MAPPA, or MAPPA, sorry, NRD, sorry, wrong acronym, to the, to the city council?
We, well, I, we work with all of our different entities. We work with either the executive, the mayor, for example, city of Omaha, it's the same that we work with Bellevue, work with your staff, we work with the executive. Typically, we don't discern how information should be filtered. We provide information-
Whoever's coming to you should be giving us the information.
And that's, that's your internal process, and I don't know how Bellevue handles it. I know I meet with the chief of staff and the mayor, and I meet with the public works director in the city of Omaha, as well as Ralston, or La Vista, or Papillion, or city administration. And if they say, hey, come to the council and do a presentation, or talk to whoever, we, we do that. But we typically have, we work at the staff level, and we work at the executive level. Very rarely do we talk to individual council members. I mean, we do if, if they have a question or they need something, but typically, we rely on the administration and the staff to determine how you guys want to handle that. Now, if they said, we come brief our council every month, we would, and, and so we would handle it that way. But that's you, that's how you, Bellevue wants to determine how to disseminate that information, not us.
And you actually answered my question.
Okay.
I just wanted to verify that indeed, we had a, a break in our communication.
That's typically what we do.
Thank you. Cook.
John, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
On your map that you gave us, the, I would imagine this is going to affect pretty much everything going down the Missouri River or Mississippi River?
Yes, this is, this is a issue that's all over the country, not only the state, but all over the country.
So I mean, we may have a lot of cities, states, NRDs, local governments, all going to the federal government and asking for some money.
That's correct.
I, I know your map, going up the Platte River, goes to like Highway 75. What happens further west? Now, the Papio Creek goes up, looks like, I might probably be a little bit off, maybe 25th Street.
Right.
What, what's happening to the west of all that?
These are the levees that are federally credited, so anything west of that either is not impacted, or we don't have a levee system that would, that would be impacted by that. So we just, we basically show the area that are impacted by R-613 and R-616. Those two systems tie back into, for example, along the Platte, they tie into Highway 75, which is considered high ground, and then they tie back into, which is 25th Street, or that's high ground there. So anything west of that would not be impacted by these two systems.
But you, you mentioned that, in here is, is to raise them.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't think I'd want to live just to the west, say, in Hansen's Lake, Chris Lake. I mean, if, what's the potential of them having a levee break if right across the street is two foot higher?
Well, they, they either are too far back in the river to be affected by the Missouri flood elevation, or they do not have a levee system that meets 100-year standard. So they'd be impacted regardless. Typically, the levee systems on the Platte are 50-year or below, so they would, they would be breached long before this system would, that provides 100-year protection.
You know, when this Highway 34 bridge has been talked about for many years, and now we're finally getting to the point of having it opening probably real soon, it just seems sort of unusual that this would come into play, and now it's sitting in a floodplain, that maybe things weren't addressed, maybe in that type of a package.
The, the approach is the issue, and, and, well, obviously, I think Department of Roads has always expected or anticipated that this, these levees would remain to provide 100-year protection. So it was designed with that in mind. It wasn't designed as though the levees didn't exist, which, if they're remapped, unfortunately, now the, the road wasn't designed to take that into account. The road was designed to take into account, those levees would always be there, and always provide that protection.
Thank you.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you. Yeah, and I appreciate the update and the information. I think one of the things I heard you say was that the current levee, even though it held, even though there was no problem, was still not acceptable to FEMA.
That's correct.
So that's no longer even discussion, that's no longer even on the table, and we don't have any choice in that matter?
Up, up to this point in time, that, that is correct. And in fact, we, the district even sent back a couple of representatives to sit on these national levee committees that FEMA put together to look at these questions all over the country. And that's one of our feedbacks, that, hey, what, what more proof do you need to actually have an event? And it fell on deaf ears, and the, the requirements haven't changed, the, you know, they thought about, well, maybe we'll give you partial credit, and so you won't have to raise them as high, you won't have to do as much rehab, and that has not been the case either. So it continues, and I don't know if there's a struggle inside the administration, and a struggle inside FEMA, if in fact, they maybe do that, but up until this point in time, as of last Friday, they said, regardless, you need to continue to plan as though you need to rehab these levees to meet the current standards. And that was the last Friday. And so that's what we continue to do.
Okay. So some of the information you've given us, I think we were aware of, we did know information, but we didn't know what FEMA's, and FEMA's always going through updates, they're always changing, we're aware of that. We weren't aware of what you just said, and we didn't know the cost. The change in their position just happened, so none of us could know that.
Right.
And then the cost that would come along, assigned to that, you're saying is still to be finalized, and where it comes from is still to be finalized.
That's correct. And of course, the longer time goes on, of course, the more expensive projects get.
Right.
And that has kind of been the district's perspective, as well as, let's try to get this arranged and lined up as quickly as we can to try to save that. I mean, this could, 24 million, could be 30 million in two years, very easily. So if we thought, if we had a clear funding sources or source, let's, let's get it to the point where we can start immediately. And I, I would be hopeful maybe DOD would step up and say, geez, this is a huge issue, and we'll put in 10, let the state put in 10, let's get this thing done and wrapped up, and we're done. Or FEMA comes back and says, anything that protects a major military installation and has, and has survived event of a certain period is grandfathered, or something like, and that's what we're hoping for. Could that happen? I hold out very slim chance, but it hasn't stopped us from continuing to ask those questions and to pursue those avenues. And if we could get someone to listen and someone to have some reasoning at that level, perhaps we could get some type of a, a situation like that where maybe we're spending half, or not spending anything at all, would be the, the most appropriate thing, in my opinion. But again, I can only present the information, I don't have that say.
Sure. So at this point, you're going to be pursuing the potential that we do build it and elevate the levees, and seeking options for cost funding of those levy increases?
We, we do it every single day. We'll, we'll turn over any stone we can, but short of selling pencils at the park, we'll, we'll try to find as much, as much as we can.
Hopefully, you don't have to stupid.
(laughing)
And, and if there is something that directly impacts funding that comes up, if, if you send it to the administration, would you just please ask that they forward it to the council as well as kind of a reminder?
Sure. And, and, yeah, no question. And we, just another note, we appreciate our relationship with Bellevue. You guys always step up to the plate and assist when we ask you for assistance. And, and if it's funding, or if it's regulations, or whatever, you're a great partner, and we appreciate the, obviously, the council and the mayor's support, and, and your staff. You're probably one of the most respectful and one of the easiest communities to work with in our, in our entire district, so we, we thank you for that.
Good. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
John, I got one more question.
Sure.
What is the Corps of Engineers' responsibility here?
The Corps of Engineers' responsibility is, we built this, and it's yours, to maintain and operate. That is the furthest that they've gone as far as offering any type of assistance. And we look, like I said, we look through all the agreements that handed over that to the district, and it's pretty clear, they are ours to operate and maintain. And rehab is considered a part of that maintenance and operation type of responsibility, so they're ours.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler.
Okay, thank you.
Number four, review and discussion without action of items on the agenda of the regular council meeting. We'll start with three, approval of minutes, advisory committee reports, A through C, anything? Approval of claims, four. Special presentations. Mr. Shucha.
Sorry, can we go back on the agenda? I don't know, is now the appropriate place to do it? On item 12H1, we need to remove that, the final Platte.
Okay, well, and we'll, we'll take care of that tonight.
At that time, okay.
It, it did not, my understanding is, it did not go through the planning commission, just the Platte part, so we're going to just remove that, number one, H1.
Yes.
Thank you. Six, liquor license, none. Seven, ordinances for adoption, ordinance number 3756. Questions? Three, seven, number eight, ordinance number 3757. Three, seven, five, eight. Nine, ordinances for introduction, ordinance 3759. Three, seven, six, oh. Ten, public hearing, one and six-year road plan. Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Acting, but Mayor. Jeff, I, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to get ahold of you or Bobby. I'm just wondering, as we do the one and six-year plan, my question relates not to the streets, but if we're out there and we're doing them, when we might do sidewalk districts, or how that fits into the one and six-year plan, since the council is all committed to making sure we get the sidewalks, and we somehow have to get there through sidewalk districts? So how, what's the connection, or how do we tie that in, or make that happen, not with this one, but in the upcoming ones? Bobby?
Yeah, just, I guess, a real quick response, I think that's in reference to an email that we had a week or so ago.
I did send an email about it.
Yeah. We've begun over the last couple of years to address some of the sidewalk issues, mainly ADA compliance, along with a lot of our maintenance overlay work and whatnot citywide. Currently, what's before you is, is part of what's been developed in terms of the two-year budget process and the updated capital improvement plan. To answer your question, I, I think to stick some more projects potentially in on the one, or one year and the six-year plan would probably take place over the course of this summer, I would imagine. I would imagine we'd be looking at updating, uh, capital improvement plan to go through, uh, twenty-twenty. And at that time, we'll evaluate everything and probably, uh, look at adding some additional projects.
Okay. Do you need help? I, 'cause it seems like if, when we start doing the sidewalk districts, it's best to go with the ones that are gonna be the cheapest or the easiest, or that we get the maximum return on, like around schools, or where maybe several blocks are all filled in except one or two places, and then we can get a long stretch of sidewalk rather than having gaps along the way. I'm just
Yeah.
wondering about the process of identifying one, and two, then prioritizing so that we do get them in the capital improvement projects list and the one and six-year plan, or however it will unfold.
Yeah, the, the area, I guess, specifically that you had referenced over off of Thirty-sixth and Chandler has been, uh, on the, the six-year plan, and then taken off at some point in time, had been on, from my understanding, for several years, is doing an intersection improvement, um, up until, oh, uh, if I had to guess, I, I don't recall exactly, probably about five years ago, or, or maybe a little bit more than that. There is a need, um, at the time, I think, uh, the considerations was that the scope of the project, I think the project intended there was just to do some, uh, traffic signal work. But in order to, I guess, uh, really look at the scope work that needs to be done, it's gonna be a pretty involved project, uh, with the intersections, uh, needing to improve, widen, uh, with some open dishes that need to be addressed, and, and then ultimately to even be able to put in sidewalks, um, at that location, and, and I guess is, and that would be kind of how we, uh, look at putting a project on for future capital improvement plans. Uh, need to address the entire scope of work in, in more detail, as opposed to just leaving a project on there that doesn't necessarily, uh, address everything that needs to be done in the area. What you have before you here is, is mainly, oh, identifies citywide maintenance needs. There's a few reconstruction projects, um, and like I said, we could, we can take a look at developing some of those projects probably this summer.
And I, I think one distinction between the road projects and the sidewalk improvement districts would be that the homeowners would pay for the sidewalks, so those improvements wouldn't necessarily be. So if they didn't pay, then we have to go through that process, but theoretically, they should be paying for those, so. But thank you for your answer and your information and your work.
Just to elaborate a little bit more, too, uh, now that I've got some staff, uh, we're looking at, uh, basically starting at the schools as a ra- uh, radius point.
Good.
And then working off of that and coming up with the areas based off where the schools are located. So we'll lay out those, then we'll work on getting a sidewalk district actually set up. And yes, it will be assessed to the property owners adjacent to that portion to pay for their section of sidewalk that's put in, or curb and gutter, storms or anything else that goes along with it. But that's the goal, is to start setting up the areas that we want to do these districts in.
Good.
And then priori- prioritizing based on that, too.
Okay. Thank you for that update and for having the staff to implement it.
Finally.
Yes.
And just real briefly, and I'll be here again for this evening's, uh, meeting, but I just wanted to make reference to, uh, one potential note that we may need to come back at some point in the very near future, uh, in regards to, uh, Highway three, or what is now Highway three seventy, uh, with Thirty-four potentially opening soon, that that would be taken off of the, uh, state highway system, become a local road. Uh, there was a couple of projects that were in, uh, the works prior to the state relinquishing, uh, three seventy east of the Kennedy to the city, uh, that have been canceled, from my understanding. When all the details as far as, uh, the dollars, uh, in terms of funding, uh, come through, we're potentially gonna be looking at a few, uh, critical areas that need some maintenance work, uh, for overlays, and then some bridge work that needs to be done. And then at that time, uh, I, we'd be looking at costs, and if we would be able to, uh, complete them this calendar year, and I'd probably have to come back and, uh, do another public hearing to modify the one-year plan, so I could, uh, get that to the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Fixes to number eleven, resolutions, there are none. Twelve, current business. A, point, uh, approval of appointment. B, Councilman Preister.
Just a, a comment, I appreciate that we have people willing to serve, and I think this appointment to the Community Development Block grant that you arranged is excellent. He's got good qualifications, and we're very fortunate that people are willing to serve, so. Since it's on consent and I can't comment later, I thank you and I thank him and everybody else who serves as a volunteer to help improve our community.
Thank you. Twelve B, approval of memorandum of understanding. C, approved purchase of a permanent maintenance easement. D, discussion on street lighting standards. E, approve six documents, one through six, Councilwoman Blood.
Kat, is there any reason we couldn't move this forward in the agenda, by having it be towards the end of the agenda?
It's your agenda, you can move it anywhere you want.
So I'm gonna let everybody know right now that I'm gonna move it up in the agenda. I think it's, uh, paramount that we give it priority because we've drug on so long with it. And, uh, that will also give people the opportunity that come tonight, which I'm sure our gallery will be full again, um, to leave if they don't want to listen to the rest of the council meeting.
All right, I'll ask Kay, is there any place in, in particular that we have to put it?
No.
Okay, all right. All righty. F, approval of Third Amendment to the purchase agreement. G, approve withdrawal of the lease proposal to the VA. H, approve redevelopment agreement on Cornhusker Point, and we will, uh, remove number one later tonight.
Just to clarify, maybe, uh, we are gonna, uh, handle the redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement is contingent upon the plating and, and all that going through, uh, but we're not ready for the final plats, we wouldn't handle that portion.
Just the, just
Just the redevelopment agreement.
Okay. Councilman Preister.
For clarification, then, we wouldn't amend the agenda, we just would not approve, we would just carry over the final plat?
I wouldn't even necessarily carry it over, I think we'd just remove, uh, any action on, uh, one. Is that how you, Chris, what's your thoughts on that?
I, I would just remove it from the agenda tonight, and, um, it'll be on our March twenty-seventh Planning Commission agenda. It'll come back to you, or it should come back to you for final plat approval on April fourteenth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, takes us back to number five, executive session. For the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of an individual, I'm, motion that we, I move that we go into executive session to discuss real estate negotiations for the city-owned Danielle's property at Thirty-sixth and Cape Park, proposed lease of space at fifteen hundred Wall Street with the VA, contract negotiations with I A F F Local number forty-nine oh six, Hotel Conference Center project. Second. Motion by Sanuk, second by Blood, please vote. My vote is yes. All voted yes. We will now adjourn to executive session to discuss those items that we just, we just named.
Good evening, and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting, Monday, February twenty-fourth. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Terry Martison, Golden Hill Seventh-day Advantage Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Father, I'm thankful tonight for all these people here who, who have given a part of their lives to be sure that this community is, is well-managed, and, and, uh, Lord, I just pray that for each one, you would give them wisdom and strength this evening as they conduct the business of, of our city. Lord, I'm also thankful that you've allowed us to rub shoulders with so many men and women in the armed forces in our community. I pray that you would bless them wherever they are in their deployment, or whether they're here. Lord, we claim your wisdom tonight, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Terry. Item two, Kay, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael. Mrs. Sanuk.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Knutson.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
Item two A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee report. Three A, approval of agenda, Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister, any discussion? Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, now I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda by removing twelve H one, and I request that we move twelve E prior to five A on the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. And now another vote? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item three C is under consent, Councilwoman Blood?
A motion to approve three B, consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item three C is under consent agenda. Item four, approval of claims, also under consent. Item five, Councilwoman Blood.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive our usual rules and allow public comment, um, at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister, discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I ask that before we begin public discussion, since we have a letter that needs to be read from Councilman Carmichael, um, and because I know one of our council members are ill tonight, that we can hopefully move quickly, but I'd also like to say a few words. We've worked for months with Kinseth, Kinseth Hospitality, um, because it's really important to partner at the outset to produce a more economically successful venue when you have part, private partner, partner, private-public partnerships. We worked with them in concert with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, and they brought forward, working with us, a sustainable operating platform, clear metrics for success, and it is a sector-specific response to one of the few areas that we have where we can grow the area around the Twin Creek area. Kinseth has a franchise agreement for this area, and they don't need to build in Bellevue. They can take it anywhere they want. The time to make it a ballot issue, which I know is one of the requests, which I found out through the paper, not from our council people, um, is not after months of contract negotiations and meetings to refine our terms over and over and over again with Kinseth, and then have them come to our meeting while we vacillate. We're elected officials, we are the voices for our constituents. Our constituents have said loud and clear, they want effective economic development. We did it right this time. To compare it with the property at, uh, Thirty-sixth and Cornhusker, that is not a public part, private partnership. That was people who were, prior to this council, it came on two thousand eight, that overpaid for property and didn't have a plan for it. And when we came on to the council, we put plans into place, and that area will soon to be developed. Don't poison the well for future development. If you poison that well, we will never regain the ground that we will lose if you make that happen. And so I beg the council members that think it's time to take it to the ballot issue to please reconsider, this was not the time, the time was months ago. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sanuk.
Yes, I have a position statement that Councilman Steve Carmichael asked me to read for him. He's not able to be here tonight, uh, and so again, this is from Councilwoman Carmichael. He says, first, I want to apologize to all the citizens of Bellevue, to Kinseth Development and Mr. Johnson for not being here tonight for this most important vote. I scheduled a vacation with my wife, Deborah, before my election to this office, uh, for this week, and cannot be here to cast my vote on the project. As you are all aware, during the election and special election, I took the position that I was not in favor of public-private development. I have not wavered or changed my opinion on that commitment. I've spent countless hours, though, since this project was first brought to my attention, evaluating this project, both economically and financially. If approved, this project will create approximately twenty million in new taxable valuation and spin-off development, with the potential to create untold millions in additional taxable valuation. Sales tax receipts are projected to create additional revenues, and if correct, the total revenues will offset the bonded debt repayment and leave the city with a very positive cash flow. It will infuse our western city limits with new development that will provide economic incentive to other potential developers to evaluate this area for the development of future business growth, and strongly consider bringing their business to Bellevue. Bellevue has not had a good track record with respect to public-private investments. The Coors Lab property, World Baseball Village, and the land on Thirty-sixth and Cape Park have all been dismal investments which lacked vision and have floundered economically. Lately, though, there's been positive growth potential in all three, and I sincerely hope that eventually Bellevue will rid itself of these albatross projects. The Convention Center project, when evaluated on its own merits, shows more potential than all three combined. If the numbers projected by the developer and the, and the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce come to fruition, I believe this project would be a catalyst for future economic development for Bellevue. I believe, though, that the eight million dollar investment, though bond, through bonded debt, that we are asked to consider tonight should not be a decision made solely by six members of the council elected by the public. This project is of such a magnitude that, in my mind, it requires a vote of the public be initiated in order to decide whether or not we move forward with this financing mechanism. If approved by the citizens, I would wholeheartedly support it. Thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion tonight. I sincerely hope and pray that the council will make the right decision for the citizens of Bellevue. And again, these were words from Mr. Steve Carmichael, Councilman Carmichael, who couldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanuk. Are there any other words for the council? I'll see none, I'm gonna go ahead and open for public comment. May I ask to see how many are proponents? All right, all those in favor? Great. Um, and if we could get maybe just a couple that would represent the proponents, oppose? Okay, so if we can get a couple, um, not everyone has to speak, we get it loud and clear. So I'm, I'm not open for public hearing.
It'd have been pretty sad had I raised my hand at the wrong request, but Jim Resta with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. I think you know where I stand on the position. It's been two years in the makings of us working together on this project, and I think, uh, Steve Carmichael's statement, as well as Carol, the numbers have been vetted. It's probably going to be one of the best things that we can see as far as for development and economic development within our city. So we're gonna encourage you to say yes, and I know, Mayor, you have called out who the proponents are, and I think, you know, the last council meeting we went through did a presentation on, on, not only the finances behind it, but also as well as who's coming to town, and it's a Marriott Courtyard, which is one of the best things that we could have in our community from a national brand. We won't regurgitate that again tonight, but I think if, yeah, you ask for a call of hands, and if you'd like, we've got a couple that are prepared to come up and speak, not only just from business perspective, but there are also just John Q. Public in our community, too, that has a saying, too, that would like, if you'd like, so.
Councilwoman Blood?
I'm gonna put you on Front Street. Jim, I want you to be honest, and I don't know what you're gonna say, and I hope it's the right answer. Sincerely, if we poison the well, we poison the water after dragging somebody through months and months of negotiations and contracts being done over and over and over again, and they have the opportunity to go elsewhere, um, and we blow this, what do you think's gonna happen? You, you represent the chamber, you're our welcome mat for economic development. What kind of impact do you think that's gonna have on future relationships that you might have with potential developers? Do you think it'll be a positive one, a negative one, and if so, why?
Well, I'll back you up. I think, you know, and you, you mentioned that what's important to know here is through this two-year process, and probably in the last eight to nine months, these this two-year process and probably in the last eight to nine months, these numbers have been vetted sideways.
Right.
Backwards, forwards, and the confidence level on those numbers, not only from the chamber's perspective, but I think our, our city officials, albeit whether finance, Dan is the same way, we've looked at these things all different ways. Our developer is in tow pretty heavily, as well as the Kinseth Group. Number one, the Kinseth Group would not make an investment in a fourteen million dollar Marriott Courtyard if they didn't see potential in this community. So that speaks volumes within itself. So by saying that, that we've got an interest in our community in the highest sense, if we are to poison the well, I always hate to say it'd be lights out, but it would, it would make it very difficult to recruit somebody else if we send the wrong message. Within this development here, what we do know is what's going to come behind this. But this project has always stood on itself as build a conference center along with the hotel. It'll pay for itself. Volumes will come behind that as far as what the retail and the restaurant interest is going to be, without disclosing who it was, but we were up at a ribbon-cutting Friday, and somebody who is well-known throughout Nebraska is a large investor that would like to bring a restaurant here to the community. You know, the first comment was that he's looking at Omaha, he's shopping Omaha. Well, as soon as we talked about the conference center, the radar points directly in that direction. What a better fit. So we know the interest is there. This thing will be the catalyst to get other projects going. So poisoning the well could, could virtually cause lights out, and you don't want to see that happen. I think we're right on the edge of a lot of good things happening, and this is one of them that'll get it going. Is that honest enough?
And showing a positive, I should put this in a question format, and so if indeed we show that we can have positive relationships, when it comes to development here in Bellevue, that potentially opens the door then for future development.
Yes, it's a game changer. It also, you know, the positive message you send to other developers that we're open for business, and we want to do business, and we're ready to roll, and I think that this is the, the message that we'll convey whether we are or not.
And might I say that I'm proud that you're our chamber director? You do an exceptional job, and it's really, just been really refreshing having somebody be such a big go-getter, so good job.
Lot of good things on our horizon. Would you?
Thank you, Mr. Risto.
Steve Johnson, managing partner for Twin Creek LP, the developer for this project. I just heard the, the comment about the poisoned well, and, and for me, as a developer, trying to think of the future and what we can have in Twin Creek, what we can have in this community, I would also like to put in, in your minds the idea of a sweet, sweet water coming up from that well. And after all, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to see what the vision is for Bellevue to better serve this community. And the, maybe one of the unique things that the council has in its hands right now at this moment in time is all of the elements are here to make this happen. And we, I've been through the numbers before, and I, and I don't necessarily want to repeat all of those, but just to put them in just their very basic format, the, the valuation in this eighty-five acre Twin Creek Village is forty million, and that was a good enough value for the city to annex it last year, and it's a positive, positive for economics for the city. With the hotel, the conference center, and then a multifamily project to follow, which they're in their diligence stage now, we're probably about thirty days away from closing that out and getting that done. If you just fast-forward, two years from right now, that forty million becomes eighty million. And I can't think of another thing in the city of Bellevue, or even, you know, figure out what part of Sarpy County where, where anybody has in their hands the ability to just say yes, to fully negotiated documents, and, and pull the trigger on this and, and go forward with it. So two years from now, double that valuation. And then I'll just say that I believe what, what that does for me as a developer is that turns me loose to go finish the rest of the development, which is the main street for Twin Creek Village. We would see that as another twenty to twenty-five million on top of all of that. So you're talking about about a hundred million dollar development. I'd like to see that open at the same time the hotel and the conference center do, and that's what my objective is. We'll see if we can get that done, but with your positive vote tonight, I think it'll, it'll really make that highly possible for us to get that done. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Bob Whaling, I'm the co-owner of Take Aim Indoor Shooting Range here in Bellevue, and I'd like to say I am for it, and I would agree with Ms. Blood that the time to act when something is in front of you. I think this development, and I can only go based on our industry, I don't want to speak for everybody else. Our range has literally drawn thousands of folks in from the surrounding area that have never once stepped foot in the city of Bellevue. We kind of take little unscientific polls and we ask, and literally we'll have people fifty, sixty years old, been to Bellevue once, and that was for an airshow when they were this big. Just our industry alone, you, one example of gun shows, for example, they typically draw between ten and fifteen thousand people on average, and that's from the neighboring states and everywhere else. Those folks come, they spend a lot of money, they stay overnight, they take all their cash, they put it into the restaurants and the, the local businesses. I think now would be a good time. Everyone else in Sarpy County seems to be going forward. Bellevue seems to kind of stagnate a little bit, so. And that's all I needed to say.
Thank you, Mr. Whaling.
Thank you.
Dave Compton, one-one-three West Twenty-Second Avenue. I've done some research actually since the last meeting that we've had on exactly how much money comes into our economy from our hotel rooms and if there is really a huge need for it. And looking over a ten-year, the last ten years with tourism, because four percent of the money actually goes to the tourism board for our, our budget, ten years ago it was two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars, and we just closed out December the other day, and it was almost one-point-two billion. Like I said, that's not hotel revenue, that's the four percent tax that actually goes back to Sarpy County for our budget. That tells me, over the last ten years, that the economy's been very strong as far as people wanting to come to Sarpy County. That was even through a sluggish economy for four or five years that we went through. The numbers continued to rise. I think it's a little bit unfair to compare this project with some of the other purchases the city of Bellevue's made, Thirty-Sixth and Cape Park. You know, we took that off the tax rolls. It's been sitting for probably ten years. Was not on a tax rolls. It was not a partnership between the city and anybody else. And the only game plan that we had for that property when they bought two-hundred-and-seventy acres was a library and a park. Just not a good game plan there for the city of Bellevue. Same thing with the Coors Lab. I don't believe that's a joint partnership either. We bought that, we went and we got a grant, we fixed that land up, you know, and even the softball village, you know? From my understanding, I spoke with them the other day, they got ninety-one baseball teams coming from thirty states. If we didn't have them thirty, or the ninety-one teams coming from thirty states staying in our city, what would that do to our budget? That's a lot of sales tax revenue coming in to the city of Bellevue. So I don't think that, you know, when you sit there and look at it, it's out here on this property out there is where the developer chose to go, and we need to offer them an incentive to take and come here. It's probably the biggest thing to sit Bellevue for a long time. Everybody says, well, they don't get no help on Fort Crook Road. That's not true. Fort Crook Road, we're giving millions and millions of dollars in tax improvement financing or anybody else that wants to take and build down there. So we are helping developers down on Fort Crook Road. And I, I think the time is to move now. I think there's a big need for it. There's a huge gap between Bellevue and Clearout and La Vista, and, you know, I, I think it's, if we don't capitalize on it, I think somebody else will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Are there others?
My name is Michelle Barrett. I'm a resident of Ward Three. I have been in Bellevue for eighteen years. I raised my kids here. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote in favor of the conference center. The success of this city hinges on economic development that would drive new projects around this facility, and I believe it's the beginning of, of these new developments in this area that would help build restaurants and the retail shops and drive sales tax revenues. Bellevue is well, well overdue to have something like this come to us, so I ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Hello, Rusty Hike, one-five-four-two Highway Seventy-Five, business owner, right here in Bellevue on Mission. I was here two weeks ago. My opinion's still the same, strongly support this project. I don't want to see it go to a ballot. I don't think, there's some things that don't belong on a ballot. You're all sitting up there to represent the people. I think that's your job. I've sat in seats similar to that, and I had to make those decisions. I think this is an easy decision. When you hold a seat up there, it's no different than having something on the ballot. It's, you're up there because of the people that voted for you, and you're also up there for the people that did not come out and vote. So I just, we're all working really hard on bringing business to town, and we need your help. So I just want to throw my support out there for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hike.
Matt Riquini, owner of State Farm Insurance Agency, twenty-two-eleven Cape Hart Road. As a small business owner, I hear, I'm here, and I want to encourage the council to look at your candidate. A lot of what I do as a small business owner is I hire people, and I have to make judgments, and I have to make a decision on, is this the kind of person I want to hire? You're going to enter a partnership with somebody, and I think you've already done the due diligence. This is the character. It's a group of people who are proven. They've got a trademark, name, a brand that is synonymous with quality, and the people of Bellevue have elected all of you to make the decisions to help Bellevue be a best-in-class city. These kinds of meetings are held so that people who are in favor or opposition to what you're going to vote on can come out and have a voice. And I saw nobody in opposition to making an arrangement with Kinseth. So as a small business owner, as a member of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, I would encourage you strongly to take the responsibility that is set in front of you and make the right decision, and do what is best for the city of Bellevue, not just for today, but for years and decades to come. You have an opportunity to be the city council that brings what is the start of a boom of economic commerce in the city of Bellevue. So I encourage you to vote in favor of bringing Kinseth in, and encourage you to do that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Riquini.
I'm Derain Sherman, and I've lived in Bellevue for sixty years, and I worked for the Air Force for forty years, and during that time I worked for protocol all the time. And many's the time when we would have a bunch of people coming in all the time from Washington, and there wasn't a place for them to stay. And they would come here earlier, before the meeting, from the Pentagon to look at what we had to offer them, and it was like the Crown Quarter or something, and that wasn't satisfactory with them at the time, so we'd have to haul them way in buses out to Seventy-Second Street or someplace, realizing this was a long time ago. But we, the need exists even more now than ever for a place that has a conference center that's hooked with, into a hotel, for, because there are people from all over that want to come here for reunions and for weddings and for the families when they come here. There is such a good reason to have it there, and in that wonderful area where Marcus is doing his wonderful things with their theater and with everything else that's around there. This would really be a, a growing pot for Bellevue, in my opinion, and I certainly hope that we pass it without having go to, to another election of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman.
I'm Paulette Davidson. I'm the CEO at Bellevue Medical Center, and I am in favor of this project. Bellevue Medical Center has been in the community now for about three and a half years, and we continue to grow. We're seeing more and more people in the community and more and people, more and more folks really from outside of the community. You probably read recently that Madonna Rehab Hospital is going to be leasing space within Bellevue Medical Center. Many of those patients stay in the hospital for over twenty-five days at a time, which means their families need places to stay. It turns out to, Bellevue will be a home away from home for many of those folks who've had severe traumatic brain injuries or spinal column injuries. So we are beginning to become more of a healthcare metropolitan, and, you know, I have to say, today I received a call from someone from the community that wanted to use our conference room. Many of you have used our conference rooms in the past. It's a nice-sized room, but it's not quite big enough for some of the things in the requests that we get, so we oftentimes have to turn those folks away. So I really see this project being critical for the community. So thank you.
Please sign in.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson.
Please sign in.
You know, I think, Kay, I think half of them did not sign in, so I might want to pass that clipboard around, but I did make a note myself.
Chuck Frederick. I, I think I said last time it was a win-win situation, and I mentioned the fact that me being a bridge player and play duplicate bridge, we have a regional, Nebraska regional, and we've been holding it for the last, I think, ten years over at Mid-America. They do a great job over there. Like I said, free parking, and I'm sure there'd be free parking here too, but we have people from all over the country come, from probably at least twenty, thirty states, and so they'd have an opportunity to come here to Bellevue, and of course, we have Bill Gates and Warren Buffett come every year too. So that kind of draw cannot hurt Bellevue for having a convention center here. Thank you. I'll sign later.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. I see none other. I will close the public hearing. Mr. Cook?
I'd like to make a statement, and this is very difficult for me. I need the pastor's strength that he said in his invocation, but I've looked at these numbers, and I've gone through this, and this has been very difficult for me. I'm going to read a statement, and then we'll, I imagine we'll move on to a vote. When the city, my feeling is when the city is planning to make such a large investment of eight million dollars, I feel the vote should be put out to the residents so that they can have input on how the city invests. The May two thousand and fourteen primary election is just around the corner, and is an opportunity to allow the residents of Bellevue to have a say in how the city spends their money. In November of two thousand and twelve, the voters of Bellevue turned down a request for a one-half cent sales tax increase. It was voted down by a three-to-one margin. In two thousand and thirteen, the city increased our property taxes by four and a half cents for the current budget year. Next year, our property tax will increase by another two cents. How much can we ask from our residents? The conference center will be leased by the hotel developer for one dollar per year plus property taxes or an equal amount to the property taxes. After twenty years, the hotel developer has the option to buy the conference center, operate it for another ten years with an annual payment, or walk away. This proposal also increases the hotel lodging tax on all hotels in Bellevue. The city is required to make fresh-ups of conference center and totaling, to the conference center totaling two and a half million dollars in the first twenty years. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the fifth anniversary, one-point-two million on the eleventh anniversary, and six hundred and fifty thousand on the seventeenth anniversary. These fresh-ups will include civilware, pictures for the walls, tables, chairs, vacuum cleaners, flooring, and other materials. These fresh-ups of two and a half million are in addition to the bond payments we are liable for. The fresh-ups do not include the maintenance and repairs. The city shall perform all maintenance, repairs, and replacements, including utility systems, plumbing, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, electrical systems, structural, foundation, that these are structural, I'm sorry, foundations, roof, wall, walls, sidewalks, parking, driveway areas, landscape areas to maintain a first-class, in first-class condition. These are required fixes and repairs by the city. These are additional to the material repairs stated above in the fresh-ups and also the bond payments. We have to be careful because the city already has large investments in the World Baseball Village, Coors Lab property, and the land at Thirty-Sixth and Cape Hart Road. With such a large investment at stake, the citizen's input is valuable. With such a large investment at stake, the citizens' input is valuable. That way they have a say in how the city moves forward. My decision is not a result of the lack of leadership, but is a result of my numerous hours of research, both on the financial perspective of the city as well as what I feel is best for the city due to the financial obligation going forward. For these reasons, I will not support the conference center at this time.
Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the six documents that are in regard to the convention center project with Twin Creek LP and Kenzeth Hospitality Company Corporation. And that would include the real estate purchase agreement, the option agreement, the joint development agreement, the lease agreement, the development and design services consulting agreement, and the option agreement to Bellevue.
Second.
We have a second by Steve Knudsen. Any discussion? I say take a breath and vote. Excuse me. The vote is four to one. Motion carries. Thank you. I want to thank the council. I want to thank the council, the administration, city attorney, finance director, the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, concerned citizens, and all those who have spent countless hours over the last over year and a half to make this convention center facility a reality. While there are risks, we understand them and we have calculated the risks. Larry, we begin on finding additional funding sources, on foundations to make this truly a destination place in Bellevue. Lastly, Steve Johnson, Monty, thank you for your patience and persistence on making this a reality. Now the real work begins. I hope to see everyone back for the groundbreaking ceremony approximately August and the ribbon cutting in 2015. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number five, special presentation by Complete Streets. If you want to take a moment for those that would like to exit, before we go on to item five, please do so. Thank you. Have a great evening. Thank you. While the excitement is in the air, we need to get back to business. Do you'd like to close the door for the, to the council chambers? Thank you, Larry. Item number five, special presentation, 5A, Complete Streets Annual Report. Mr. Burlowitz.
Actually, I'm going to take Chris off the hook because I wasn't sure whether I'd be here tonight because I was at a conference today, so, and he can jump in if he wants to. Annually, in accordance with ordinance 3160, I'm required to prepare a annual report on our Complete Streets accomplishments. During 2013, Complete Streets activities were conducted by city staff. That encompasses the planning department, public works, and also the citizens who are on the Complete Streets Advisory Panel. I'm not going to go through the report. It is, we do have public copies. It lists all of the activities, again, that the city has completed. I refer to public works and planning. And Mr. Preister had also prepared a report of the various activities completed by the Complete Streets Advisory Panel. So unless there are questions, I guess I would defer to, or open it up if Councilmember Preister wants to add anything, or Jeff Suchek, or, excuse me, Chris Suchek, I guess their names mixed up, or Jeff Roberts. There we go.
Did you want to go first, Chris?
Mr. Suchek.
Really, I don't have anything more to say than other what Mr. Burlowitz said. Staff, including planning, public works, and also Larry Burks with the Complete Streets project, he was in the front of that project. So, or actually, it was the Green Streets project that he was working on. You do have the list in front of you for things we worked on and also, again, the items that the Complete Streets Citizens Advisory Panel worked on, so really no need to go through them one by one.
Thank you, Mr. Suchek. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think it might be helpful to the public to understand a little bit about what complete streets is because people think this means we're going to have a sidewalk, we're going to have a bike path, we're going to have walking trails on every street, which is the farthest thing from the truth. Complete streets means that we plan for and plan in advance so we save money and don't have to do retrofit like we have to do now for sidewalks around schools so children can safely get to schools. It also is consideration for the elderly so that they do have sidewalks and can stay in their homes and neighborhoods and can safely get out and exercise and go where they need to locally, hopefully, to shop. It is a concern for children, it is a concern for the elderly, it is an expanded view of the future so that we plan early on rather than having to spend more money later. So it's good advanced planning that entails complete streets. It also encompasses looking at transportation in a new light. Transportation is not just moving people in cars and goods to locations. Transportation, as we view it in the future, is how people move through their city to get to the destinations they want to go to. Hopefully, we keep them local so they don't have to travel as far, and while they're doing that, give them safe routes. We're currently in the process of following an Americans with Disability Act requirement to have handicap accessible curbing all around the city. Had that been planned when sidewalks were put in, it would have been cheaper. So good planning, advanced planning to save money is a big part of complete streets. Doing it with consideration, concern for people in the community, and a thoughtful way of viewing transportation for the future is also what they're about. To that effort, we have a citizens' panel composed of Donna Dostal, Lynn Rollins, Dave Thompson, Cody Wink, and Ken McNeil, who I appreciate giving volunteer time out of their own time to help have public hearings, public input, and then present that information to the city so that as we do our planning, we've gotten the public's word on what they would like to see. So to them and to the past members who've rotated off, David Anson and Gary Welch, I'm very grateful to the planning department, the public works department, and the city administrator, and the mayor and council for all the support. I'm also grateful. This too is about Bellevue's future and a new view of how we make the city a better place. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Preister. Are there any questions from the council? See none? We'll move on to item six. Liquor license, none. Seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. Seven A, ordinance number 3756. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3756, an ordinance to amend section 9-3 of the Bellevue Municipal Code to provide for revised city council ward boundaries, to repeal section 9-3 of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing, to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 3756.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. Eight A, ordinance number 3757. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3757, an ordinance to amend section 2.04, ordinance number 3619, the Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding the definition of automotive repair services. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on item number eight A, please do so at this time. See none? I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will be March 10th. Ms. Sanyo.
Just to note a discussion possibly here. I know there was, it was brought up, the question was brought up, is the two-week time period that the boats can remain out on the lot, is that long enough if, say, a part had to be ordered for a boat? I guess that was one of my concerns and, or Mr. Carmichael's concerns that he asked me to mention.
Mr. Suchek, are you ready to? You look like you.
The 14-day period was just developed or came up with by discussion among staff and with some members of the Planning Commission Administration. There's really no scientific or research behind that 14-day period. However, our thought was that, you know, if you can't get the part in 14 days, why are you, you know, don't bring the boat or vehicle or anything to the lot to have it sit indefinitely while you're waiting for the part? The service center, service station can order the part and when it's in, then you can bring your boat or vehicle to that.
Sorry, you don't know what part you need unless somebody looks at the boat, do you? I mean, don't you have to, don't you have to do some engine diagnostics or what have you before you'd even know what part you needed?
I suppose probably there are cases like that. And again, since the boat is on a trailer, it won't necessarily need that part to move. It can be taken back to the owner's home or wherever they store it on a permanent basis while you're waiting for that part.
Mr. Cook.
Chris, is this consistent with the automotive repair services as far as on the automotive side? Is that also 14 consecutive days? Because I have the same concern. We can drive, you know, west here a mile and a half and there's probably three automotive shops that sell parts and in my younger days, working at a gas station that, you know, within an hour we'd have, you know, a couple hours we'd have a part. I just don't know if parts are that available when we talk about boats and getting into, you know, needing parts for them.
This does pertain to automotive and engine repairs and the, and engine is the boat, so the time period applies to both automobiles and boats, water, other watercraft.
Was there any, so was there any concern at the planning department as far as the timeframe of 14 consecutive days or?
No, the planning commission, no. And to be honest, it's going to be driven really on a complaint basis. There may be boats that sit there for longer, but if nobody complains about it, I can pretty much guarantee you code enforcement's not going to be out there, you know, every day looking at what boats are there unless there's a complaint about them.
Thank you, Mr. Suchek. Any further discussion? See none? Move on to item 8B, ordinance number 3758. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3758, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article III of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 370 Plaza and Moss Road, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on ordinance number 3758. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
Good evening, council, mayor, administrator, attorney. I'm Bob Stratton with Broadmore Development Company and we're the ones that are looking to purchase the property and add 75 more apartment homes to our existing Summit Apartments. We've been in the neighborhood since the, I believe, late 80s. I've been with Broadmore 30 years, so I've been lucky enough to see us grow. And the new apartments that we'll be bringing is kind of our new version that we've been doing for the last few years. It's a, it'll bring new apartment homes in, it adds well with our community, and we think we've been good neighbors as we have for the last 20-some years. Want to take care of our customers as we have been doing and treat them as we want to be treated in our own homes.
Any questions? Mr. Cook.
Bob, I think you saw the email from a citizen, Kay McGann?
Yes.
And would you just sort of explain, she brought us some concerns about the lighting, the direction of them, is it going to be interrupt, you know, the neighbors and stuff? And can you just sort of explain how you answered that in the email?
Sure. I mean, the lighting today, you know, as many things that get constructed are driven by codes, but the lighting that is done is a dark sky compliant lighting, so you don't have lights that are, 10 years ago, it may be going more horizontal. The lights, as you get beyond a certain wattage, are pointed down. We would tell you that as you drive by recent projects that we have done, recent communities, you don't notice lights that are, the place is lit up for safety for our residents because that's our main concern. So that if you're coming home late at night, you've got a clear path, clear walkway to get to your door. But we don't believe that the lighting is an issue. We would be complying with the current codes that are in place that are good codes.
And part of the property sits 20, 15 to 25 feet lower.
Below the existing.
Lights would be set lower.
Correct.
It also addressed the traffic. And I know leaving there, it sounds like the apartment complex will have one way in and out.
Correct.
And if you, if you leave there, if you go to, I'm probably going to test out my directions, but like if you go to the south or you take a left as you're leaving, you would loop around and you could end up at 42nd and 370.
42nd, yes.
If you went the other direction, it'd almost be sort of identical loop, you'd end up at 36 just south of 370.
Yes.
There was a concern about traffic and the number of cars, I think more so going to the south loop where you would hit an entrance to Quail Creek. What do you, I mean, what do you think the car?
Well, what I can tell you is with 75 apartments, and we're lucky enough that most of our places run about a 95% occupancy. So having said that, the mix that we have are some studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. We're a little heavier on the one bedrooms. Our car counts on one bedrooms, if you look at existing developments that are new like this, we end up with approximately 1.2 to 1.3 cars per one bedroom. Some of them are a little bit less than that, it's more on the high side. The two bedrooms are more close to a 1.7, 1.8. So taking average of one and a half times the 75, maybe we're going to be in the low hundreds on cars. And I'm not a traffic engineer, so how all that extrapolates out to when people leave and come home.
But it wouldn't be a significant, would you consider a significant more traffic out on the streets out there?
I'm probably a little biased. I don't think so.
It also talks about the sidewalks. You're putting sidewalks on your property.
Absolutely.
There was mention, I mean, there was mention about sidewalks and actually extending away from your property, but we wouldn't hold you liable for putting sidewalks going down the street off your property, but you are putting sidewalks on your, on your property?
Yes. And there's a sidewalk on our existing property just across on Moss Road that when it was built back in the late 90s, there was a sidewalk that kind of dead ends into nowhere. And I think what I had offered to, that we would take that sidewalk and at least get it to the bridge that crosses the creek.
And then finally, I know there was mention, would you reduce the number of units? Do you think 100 units is appropriate there? I mean, I don't know.
It's 75 units.
I think they're just trying to drop the number of cars out in the road.
It's 75 apartments. If we were to drop the number of apartments, we wouldn't do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Stratton.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there others? See none? I'll close the public hearing on this item. The third and final reading will also be March the 10th. Item nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading. Nine A, ordinance number 3759. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3759, an ordinance to amend section 5-36 through 5-40 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to licensing for carnivals, circuses, amusement shows, and other public events, to repeal such sections as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading- The second reading and public hearing will be March tenth. Nine B, ordinance number three seven six zero. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven six zero. An ordinance to amend Section twenty-three dash twenty-two of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the requirement of a bond to repeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide for the repeal of Section twenty-three dash twenty-two as heretofore existing and to provide for an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. That will also be second reading and public hearing on March the tenth. Item ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinance. Ten A, one and six-year road plan. I'm now open for public, Mr. Preister, did you have a question? I'll open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on item ten A, please do so at this time. Ten A and one resolution twenty fourteen dash oh five. I'll see none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion to approve the one and six-year plan as presented.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I think we need a motion on ten A one. That was, the one, okay? Takes us to item number eleven, resolutions. None. Twelve, current business. Twelve A, under consent. Twelve B, approval of memorandum of understanding with the International Association of Firefighters, Local four nine zero six. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the International Association of Firefighters, Local four nine zero six, to recognize them as the exclusive bargaining unit of certain full-time staff and to provide them with certain benefits.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. C, approved purchase of a permanent maintenance easement in Fontanelles Hills. Mr. Knutson.
I just have a quick question for Jeff on this. I wasn't here this afternoon. What approximately is going to be the price of this?
The agreed price was twenty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Knutson.
Make a motion that we approve the purchase of a permanent maintenance easement in Fontanelles Hills for the purpose of maintaining the city's forest mean.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. E, discussion on street lighting standards. Mr. Suchek.
Thank you, Mayor. Last summer, the planning department was tasked with looking at street lighting and how to reduce the cost or future costs of street lighting for the city, which now is approximately a million dollars a year. And much of that comes from residential street lighting in our subdivisions. OPBD owns and installs and maintains the street lighting where we pay an annual fixed dollar amount of... We pay an annual fixed dollar amount for streetlights. Damn that somewhere. Which again, totals close to a million dollars. One of the ideas that was presented to us was to look at street lighting and find a way or maybe put into our subdivision regulations requirements for spacing of street lighting, increase the spacing from what OPBD currently does as a way to reduce the number of streetlights in subdivisions and ultimately, when those come into the city limits, that it'd be a reduced or less of an increase in cost to the city in the future. We were given a copy of what the city of Lincoln uses. They, they do, they use lower wattage lots and have lights and have a further, further apart spacing than what OPBD normally puts in our area. And we also did some research on other cities and discovered that there is a range, generally two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet in codes as far as streetlight spacing. Typically, OPBD, OPBD places lights in our area about a hundred and fifty feet apart. There are a number of factors which relate to where the streetlights are spaced, always at intersections. And then other factors that would influence where they're spaced are, would be topography, curves in the streets. And then other things that we need to take a look at would be a safety concern, space them too far apart with landscaping and other features. Could have dark areas that could present a safety concern to residents of an area. Ultimately, after discussing this internally and with some of the planning commission members and administration, our recommendation is that we not amend our subdivision regulations to put into an ordinance the spacing, a spacing requirement. The city has the opportunity right now to review subdivisions. OPBD will send out a copy of the plat with a proposed streetlight layout on them. And the city, like I said, has the opportunity to review those streetlight locations. You can make changes to those locations if necessary. We feel based on the, the different factors that go into where a streetlight might be placed, that each individual subdivision is unique and that having a codified minimum distance between streetlights really would not be practical since we do have the opportunity to review and make changes to where streetlights are installed in a new subdivision. One of the other things we looked at, at first, street lighting costs would be LED lights. There are no subdivisions in the area, Omaha, Sarpa County area, that, that use LED lights now. They're considerably more expensive to install. They are not maintained by OPBD, they'd be maintained by the SID or when they come into the city, the city would maintain them. And since we did not find anybody else who was using them at this time, did not make a recommendation as far as requiring them. As always, if a developer wants to install LED lights, they're certainly free to do that. But we did not make, and planning department, planning commission did not make a recommendation as far as requiring LED lights to be installed. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate the way you laid out the information, Chris. It's accurate and, and very informative and having the hearing. I agree with all of it except the conclusion. And you would expect that that would probably be what I would do. We have, as it outlines, a standard of one hundred and fifty feet. Nobody else has that close a spacing. Currently, the spacing is every other house. I have a streetlight on both sides of my house in the front, streetlights on both sides of my house in the back. And I have to do special things to just keep the light out of my house at night so I can sleep. When I was in Arizona, their spacing is every seventh house. And they do very well. You can see between the streetlights. Of course, they don't have deciduous trees that might block some of that, so they have that advantage. But in the information that, and we also have twenty-five-foot streetlights, twenty-five feet high. The city of Lincoln has just, they have adopted two hundred and forty feet, which is at least every third house. So you still get lots of light and they use seventy-watt bulbs, so they're thirty watts less. But they have plenty of light on the street and they use twenty-foot poles. So we save money on the pole, we save money on the bulb, we save money on the light. And ultimately, we save on our electric bills. And that was the whole thing that was driving my concern. We're spending over a million dollars a year now on lights. And OPBD has raised their rates. We've annexed more area and we're only going to be spending more money. As we look at areas where we can save money, this is a prime candidate. If we, and, and the average that Mr. Suchek put on the information of the spacing in other cities is between two hundred and fifty and three hundred-foot standard, which is even a little more than what Lincoln does. So we could extend it and in doing so, I don't think the safety is an issue because that can be addressed whenever a development comes in and says, well, we've got a curve in this road. So we have special circumstances that we build in. And in those areas, you can space the lights a little closer and adapt them. But it sets the standard that they're a little farther apart. OPBD says they'll go with whatever we want to do. And so why do we put them twenty-five feet high when others are doing twenty and getting the light closer to where it needs to be? And there's still plenty of room to go under for trucks or cars or everybody else. And it's got to cost more to the subdivision. And though those SID people are paying for it initially, eventually the city will adopt whatever's left of debt and we're going to be paying for it. So it's cost-effective and it's long-term saving on electric bills for us. So I don't think the conclusion was the appropriate conclusion. However, I apologize because I wasn't in town, I wasn't able to attend the hearing to even help to make the case. I think you laid it out very well, you've got all the information there, but I don't think there was anybody there to advocate for it. And that's my mistake, that's my fault. But I think the thirty-six percent savings on LED lights is also worth investing. That's on top of what we do just by the spacing. So I think it merits reconsideration by the council and by the planning commission, myself. My opinion, I appreciate you listening to it.
Thank you, Mr. Preister. Councilman Blood.
Can I get some clarification? I wasn't cleared by the agenda attachment if this was more of a report or if you actually want a vote on this this evening.
This was more of a, I'll say, a report as far as what the planning department, planning commission recommended. If at this point, the, the council wants to direct us to go back and actually bring forward an amendment. If, if we had done this and our recommendation was to change our subdivision regulations and the planning commission had also recommended that, we would have an ordinance before you to change the regulations. Since that recommendation was not made, we don't have the ordinance before you. So again, if the council directs that a specific amendment be made, we can put that together into an ordinance and run that through the process.
Councilman Blood.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to give it back to the planning commission for further review with the additional input of Green Bellevue and Councilman Don Preister.
Mr. Sullivan.
Can I do that?
I would just suggest because it, as, because it's as a discussion item, I don't think any, or at least some of the councilors weren't anticipating taking any direction. If you guys want to just put it on the agenda and then maybe we can hone in exactly what we are wanting so that they, we can have a vote on it.
Do we want to wait until after the planning commission meets again so they can discuss it before we put it on our agenda? Or do you want us to put in our agenda and discuss it and then pass it off to you?
The, the planning commission discussed it and made the recommendation. I think rather than giving it back to them without direction from you, that we should have some directions to where the council would like to go for them to discuss specifically.
And then I'd like to remove my first motion and make a motion to place this on the agenda for the March nineteenth, the council meeting for discussion in hopes of creating an amendment or recommendation to the planning commission. Is that still wrong, Pat?
No, I, I don't think you need to make a motion. I just think what we need to do is work with administration and formulate a motion for, or formulate an agenda item for two weeks from now.
Did you want it?
I withdraw that motion.
March tenth is two weeks from now, the twenty-fourth is, you, you said the nineteenth, which is a Wednesday between the two meetings.
The nineteenth? Oh my gosh. I'm looking at the tenth and saying the nineteenth is time to go home, we got to wrap this up. The tenth.
Two weeks, okay.
And I asked City Administrator Burlowitz to take motion forward and, and do whatever has to be done to get this on.
Thank you. Are there any further discussions on item D? Mr. Cook.
Chris, I'll just make one quick comment. I noticed that some of these housing developments are getting, we're getting all different sizes and shapes of streetlights. And I don't know how that, I realize when OPBD looks at it and puts them in, they're just putting them in, there's a cost and they're moving on and stuff. But when we annex that, I don't know how that will be, you know, for the upkeep of those and the cost to the city when those lights are damaged because they're probably significantly more costly lights or poles. And, you know, I don't know if the lights are more expensive, the glass. So I, I guess my concern is, is could we somehow narrow down a standard light? And I know council member Preister was talking about maybe some heights and stuff. Is there such a standard that we could set that this is the type of light that we want in neighborhoods? And, and, and sort of push that instead of having a dozen different types of lights or poles?
Yes, my understanding from working with OPBD is that they do use a standard. Hundred watt, high-pressure sodium light on a twenty-five-foot pole. If they vary it throughout a subdivision or different subdivisions, that they're not following what they, they told me.
Okay.
So I, I can, I can talk with the person I've been working with there and get some clarification. And then as far as the, the other costs you mentioned, the poles and the lights are owned and maintained by OPBD. So when the light goes out, OPBD changes it. If somebody hits it, other than insurance, it's, it's up to OPBD to maintain that light in the pole, other than LEDs. And that, those are responsibility of either the SID, the developer or the city.
So what you're saying is a light pole out on the street, we're paying X dollars per month and they're just timesing that by how many poles are in the city limits? And that's where we get our one million dollar bill?
Yes, there, there's an annual amount per streetlight.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
Other area of develop, developments in Papillion, Gretna, La Vista, if they go to the specialty lighting, they'll allow the, the basic cost of a light pole to be part of the cost of the subdivision. Anything above that, they then require, generally will require them to pay the additional cost. In addition to that, they'll then make them form either homeowners association or merchants association and they have, are required to maintain those specialty lighting. If they go with a regular OPBD pole, then that then becomes part of the regular cost. So from that standpoint, as long as we include those in our subdivision agreements, if they're going to do specialty lighting, we'd avoid that a cost as a city.
Any further discussion on twelve E? Thank you. We'll move on to twelve E, which was discussed earlier. Twelve F, approval of third amendment to the purchase agreement on the Core Slab property. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the third amendment to the purchase agreement on the Core Slab property and give authorization to Mayor Sanders to execute the same.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sanyuk. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve G, approve withdrawal of the lease proposal to the VA. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, approve the withdrawal, the lease proposal to the VA and we authorize Mayor Sanders to sign any documents that are necessary to complete this withdrawal.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve H, approve redevelopment agreement on Cornhusker Point. Council, Councilwoman Sanyuk.
Motion to approve the redevelopment agreement on Cornhusker Point.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen. Public request to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials and employees or members of the general public should not involve personal, impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official or an employee or a member of the general public. And City Code Section two dash six eight... and City Code Section 2-68 regarding the manner of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes.
I was going to just say this, one thing is that this is not a full-time job for me. I don't get paid for this, and I really do have a lot of other things I'd rather, rather be doing, but I do want to thank Mr. Carmichael and Mr. Cook for expressing their views about the taxpayers. And I too am concerned about that, but Bellevue, with the history we've had in the past, has been not very good at bringing new businesses in here, and so I think we're kind of desperate. So I'm hoping they do a good job on this because we do need it, but I don't want to give the ship away either. The other good news, though, is that the city council meetings are now on YouTube. So now you can watch them on YouTube, and you can fast-forward through everything except the public request to be heard, so that way you get rid of all the other stuff. I did notice on ordinance eight, you had, you talked about the automobile repair services, basically referring to the boat. Did anybody ask the boat owners, the business owner there, how long it would take? Was 14 days a satisfactory time? It sounded like you talked to the planning commission, you talked among yourself. I would have just talked to the boat owner and found out. That would be a logical way of doing it. I also have to correct the minutes. In the minutes of last meeting, says here that, that... I said that I suggested a rule be made whereby any elected official who files for another elected office must resign from their current position. If I said it that way, I was wrong. What I meant to say is the same as when I ran for mayor. I was in the city council, and my term was ending at the end of that time, and that's when I decided to run for mayor. If I had run, decided to run for mayor in the middle of my term, then to me, I would have resigned because the people elected me for four years, and if I'm going to just skip to another position, I think that I owe it to the voters to have, to have somebody else in there instead of me. So I want that corrected in there. Then the other thing I asked for too, is I asked for the task force groups, and it's in the minutes, and I asked the city clerk, Kay Damas, he didn't have anything on it, and I asked Mr. Burlowitz, he didn't have anything on it. I think that kind of shows a little lack of transparency if you can't even give me the list of the people who are on these, on these task forces to replace the ones who are on the committee. The other thing that, when I spoke last time, I asked about the monthly balance sheet, and Mr. Burlowitz said, well, he said something, and then he said, well, that's only a snapshot. Well, I think we really do need some snapshots of what's going on financially in the city. I mean, in other words, to me, that makes a lot more sense to do that than just wait until the very end. Now, the other thing that bothers me too is I've been there many times, and you give me rules to follow, and I think I follow them, but there's also rules for you. And last time I spoke here, three people, after I spoke, spoke, not directly to me, but to somebody else. I think that's a violation of the rules. And from now on, if anybody's going to do that to me, I'm going to stand here, and I want the right to respond back because there was a bunch of stuff said last time that was not accurate as far as I was concerned. So that's all I have to say, but I'm going to wait here and make sure that nobody makes any comments about what I said.
Mr. Burlowitz.
Yeah. To clarify in regard to the balance sheet, when I said it was just a snapshot, cities operate on a cash basis accounting. When we have audits done, it's converted to accrual, so a cash basis only reflects a specific point in time as opposed to accrual-based accounting. So it doesn't give a true picture. It only gives at that particular time, whatever receipts have been received, whatever expenses have been paid. It doesn't show any, you might say, in terms of revenue earned but not received. It doesn't show, reflect costs incurred but not paid. So that was my basis for my comment.
But other cities do a monthly balance sheet, and Papillion and Council Bluffs, you can go ask them right away, and they'll give you a snapshot right then and there.
Okay. Well, again, it's a snapshot. It doesn't give a true or overall picture because, again, there are revenues that the city has coming to it. Sometimes it's grant reimbursements, fees that we've not received and therefore they aren't accounted for. We purchase goods, we receive them, the bill's received, but the expenditures are not formally approved and paid by the city council. So that part, those pieces of the puzzle aren't reflected in the cash basis accounting. So that was my point for my comment and point of clarification.
I think I talked to Dave Black. He does it the same way, and he says that they do it.
Mr. Frederick. Five minutes are up.
What?
Your five minutes is done. Thank you. Miss, Councilwoman Blood, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm directing to Pat. Pat, just clarification on public comment. As councilpeople, we aren't allowed to speak directly to anybody who stands at the podium regardless of how long they stand there because that's against the state statute of what we're allowed to do in public forums. And then the only time we turn and talk to either you or Mr. Burlowitz is for clarification or to give an explanation, but never, as what just happened, are we to have dialogues with people that are standing at the podium? Is that correct? No matter how long they stand there?
It depends, one, if there was a previous agenda item, it's still part of the agenda. But secondly, and that does come up sometimes, but secondly, if, you're not supposed to be gauging an open dialogue on something that's not an agenda item. How far that breaches that if there's a short comment or something? Probably not, but once it starts to get into a full-length discussion or debate, we're violating the rules.
But it's not a symbiotic dialogue between the council and whoever happens to be standing at the podium?
Generally, no.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, Mr. Sullivan, the rules for the council, we are abiding by when we ask for clarification, I believe, because the council policy states that we can direct questions to staff to get them to take action if need be, and we can also correct information if we think it's misleading or misinforming or maybe just not complete, as the city administrator did.
I think the main thing that we looked at on public request to be heard is to allow for somebody to bring something to the attention of us that we may not know about, and then directing the administration to look into it. From the standpoint, at least in this particular instance, most of what we have heard have been things that have been repeated and maybe the person isn't getting what they want, but I guess from that standpoint, there's not much more input for us to give.
Councilman Blood.
With the exception of maybe clarification on the state statute on an issue that keeps coming up?
I'm assuming you're mentioning on running at midterm, you know, that's a legislative decision. We have no control over that right. That is a decision that's governed by state law. It's not a city ordinance, and we don't have any authority to adjust that.
I understand. That's just the right, I think is the right thing to do, that's all.
You may have a seat, Mr. Frederick. Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak at this time?
My name is Jim Modry. 1207 Rebecca Court, excuse me. I think the vote tonight to go forward with the Hotel and Convention Center is a good move for the city. There is risk involved, of course. Numbers that are provided, oftentimes, even though how well we think they might be vetted, are always optimistic. So we just need to see how that works out as we go along. Given that $8 million expenditure plus other expenses that'll go along with it, fresh-ups and maintenance, as Councilman Cook said, we need to be wary as well of possible other upcoming expenses related to the FEMA levy reinforcement strengthening. We're going to have to watch carefully the timing of when those expenses, you know, come to us so we can make it through that short-term period before we start getting payback from the conference center. It's good that, you know, we're looking and being proponents for LB 940 and 1046 in the legislature to try and perhaps get some of the taxpayer money that we've already given the state, to have some of that moved over to the water sustainability fund, and they can then put some of that towards the levy reinforcement. At the same time, I think we need to be actively pursuing and pushing the governor, the state legislature, the attorney general to push back. I know Mayor Sanders has tried to push back, but I think we need to lobby them to push back against the federal government with its encroaching extra constitutional laws, regulations, mandates that they push to the states and to communities like us that we have to try and find some way to come up with the funding for. So that's it. The only last thing is the $550,000 that we had previously of uncollected fees, EMT, ambulance fees. Just like to get a, still like to get kind of an accounting of where we stand on the collection agency trying to collect some of those funds and how that feeds into our budget, our budget calculations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Modry. Are there others? Not. We'll move on to item number 14. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? See none, please vote. Next council meeting will be on March the 10th, also with Board of Ecoization meeting, March 10th, 5:45 PM. Thank you.